It's good.
Yes.
We just want to start.
Call it in.
What's in here?
Yeah, what's in there?
You'd like to know.
See if I'm still.
Can I do this?
You're streaming and.
Oh, good evening and welcome to the city of Sunbury Council meeting. It's March twentieth, two thousand and twenty four, seven thirty P M. Would you please join me in a moment of silent prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Local, please.
Mayor St. John's here. Mr. Neff.
Here.
Mr. Grumney.
Here.
Mrs. Cooper.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Here.
Mr. Capel is absent. And Miss Drayer.
Here.
Six present. We have a forum.
All right, excellent. Uh, we did have a meeting on March sixth, two thousand and twenty four, looking for a an approved, excuse me, a motion to approve the minutes.
Motion.
A motion by Mr. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper. Discussion. Local.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Drayer.
Yes.
Six years, motion approved.
All right, and we do have a few scheduled visitors. Um, we're gonna go to the second one. Uh, I do not believe Deputy Director Stewart is here. Is that correct?
He is not.
Good, J C Weber, um, the department, uh, E M A has had quite a busy week. With that said, I do, I do wanna just take a, a serious, uh, tone for a moment, and that is, um, to all of our first responders who were out during the storm, uh, for, for Sunbury in particular, who went and helped our neighbors. I know there were neighbors helping neighbors, um, all weekend. You know, for many, the recovery is going to be long and difficult, but I, I do believe the worst is behind us and the best, uh, shown through our first responders. So thanks. I know we have the fire department here tonight. We have our police force. Um, I was so impressed. I spent a lot of time in Galena on Friday morning, uh, with their mayor and to see, you know, Berkshire Township and Sunbury and Genoa. Uh, you know, working together with Galena to help that recovery. That was, it, it was very impressive. At, at the time, it's sad, uh, you're looking around at the destruction, but, um, it's a total miracle and just a blessing that there were no, uh, fatalities, no major injuries, and I, just like we always do, we bounce back very quickly. So, uh, thank you for the work that your team has done. Uh, J C, do you wanna come up and speak with us tonight? All right, thank you.
Hmm, you pick me up okay?
I think so.
Yes. Okay. Okay, um, my name is J C Weber. I'm the emergency management specialist for Delaware County Office of Homeland Security Emergency Management. Um, thank you very much, Mayor. We, uh, at my office, that definitely send out kudos to all of our first responders and our continual responders who are working on the recovery from the tornado that happened in Delaware County last week. We continue to work through that recovery process with many citizens of Delaware County who still need aid in order to get back up on their feet. So we definitely appreciate all the help we've been given to this point and all the cooperation and coordination with yourselves and many of, of the other communities throughout the county. Tonight, however, I am scheduled to talk to you about the total solar eclipse, which is coming up on April eighth.
Would you pull the mic a little closer to you?
Better?
Better.
Better. Um, I'm scheduled to talk to you about the total solar eclipse that's happening on April eighth, two thousand and twenty four, so coming up here in nineteen days. Um, this event is still coming despite the fact of all the weather that is happening this spring. April eighth, two thousand and twenty four is a Monday. Um, the total solar eclipse is a big deal for Delaware County because Delaware County with the exception of a small sliver of Harlem Township is in the path of totality. This means that it will be dark in the middle of the day during the totality of the solar eclipse. This also means that Delaware County will be welcoming many out of town visitors to come and visit the county and experience this total eclipse with us, which is one of the things that we've been planning for, um, for a couple of years now. The city of Sunbury is in that path of totality and will experience, um, approximately a minute and a half of complete darkness due to the solar eclipse. Um, through here, the actual full eclipse itself will, uh, have start at, um, about two o'clock in the afternoon when the, sort of, the sun starts to be covered and then we'll go, the totality begins just after three P M. And then you'll have totality for that about minute and a half, and then many, like many sporting events or the fair that many of you folks here have experienced, everyone wants to leave when the event is over. So everybody wants to leave all at the same time. This is where our problems come in as a countywide because we have people who all want to leave all at the same time, and for this event, we are expecting the population of the county to double. So if you, I'm sure many of you can imagine all the construction that's going on in the county right now and what that looks like at rush hour. If we dump twice as many people in there as we normally do, we're going to have a lot of traffic management issues, um, which is one of the big things that our stakeholder groups and our responders have told us that we need to plan ahead for. So we've been working on the last few years, getting good traffic estimates, as best data as we can, um, in order to help folks, uh, be able to plan ahead for this. So this population surge can also put a strain on other resources. Like, um, myself, I went to the grocery store the Saturday before the Super Bowl. It was a mistake on my part. I shouldn't have done that, but what I discovered there was that many of my favorite snacks and foods and other things that I stock up on for were not to be found on the shelves. We all experience this with COVID, uh, to a greater degree, but many of those popular items disappear quickly. If we have doubled the population, we have many other folks coming in to stay through the weekend with their families and experience all the wonderful things Delaware County and the city of Sunbury has to offer, then they stay through that Monday. There's strain of more resources since you have more people here. So we're encouraging people to, um, come early. Go, uh, stock up on supplies. It's a Monday that the eclipse goes on, so that, you know, Wednesday, Thursday before, go to the grocery store, get your favorite snacks, get the meals and stuff that you're preparing for your family and friends who maybe are coming to visit you for this weekend because your house is inside of totality. You actually don't have to leave your property to get to experience this. And fill up your car with gas. We have that many visitors and all of our roads in the county, all those big gas stations that we often think have those giant gas tanks, they can be taxed. We may, those places, why we are planning ahead with them, they may run out. So filling up beforehand means that if you have an emergency for your family or your, um, organization or a department that you're with, with the city, you can have be filled up early and make sure that you are taken care of, and you can take care of your friends and family as needed. The other part of this is the eclipse viewing safety. Um, many people have heard about eclipse glasses. They're everywhere. In fact, I'm they're for sale for several businesses here in the city of Sunbury. The important thing about eclipse glasses is to make sure they have the, um, NASA C E certification on them. That means that NASA, they have been approved and have the darkness, um, amount that NASA says will protect you from looking directly at the sun. Looking at the sun is bad for you. Do not look at the sun without protection. There are many objects that people have used that, um, uh, Don Perkins, Don of Perkins Observatory has given us a whole list of things that people have used, everything from Mylar balloons to trash bags, to looking through moto oil, all of which are a bad idea. None of those protect your eyes from the sun. So using proper eclipse filters and glasses is important, and that's some of the educational information we've been trying to push out. Delaware County also has an eclipse website where you can go to and your constituents and residents can go to to get that eclipse focused information focused on Delaware County. There's also a state level website, which also has good information on it. The Delaware County website is more focused on our county residents, so it's a little more particular to this area of the state. Here in the Sunbury, I know that, uh, city of Sunbury is hosting a total eclipse of the park at Freedom Park. Um, also in this area, there is a um, winery at Porter Central who is hosting a open uh, wine bar experience where you can come and watch the eclipse from their property. Um, and the Sunbury K O A is also hosting people to come in. They're inviting people to come and camp for the whole weekend to do like a big bulk pricing for the whole weekend, as well as having people come into their campground on just the day of to just be on the campground, not necessarily staying overnight. So those are some of the events happening in this area. Across the county, we are up to twenty-two events total, um, everything from things like the winery and other breweries across the county. We even have Eclipse Beer at one of the breweries in the county. Um, to the zoo is hosting a solar operation with, um, different uh, science activities, including a naturalist activity for people to study the animals that come up during this time of darkness, because the nocturnal animals will wake up as the well as having the daytime animal. So it's an interesting experience for folks to have. So on top of all the wonderful things going on in the county, we are asking that people, um, arrive early to their destination that day. So, you know, don't try to get to your destination at two thirty right before totality. Plan ahead, maybe go have picnic lunch somewhere, or, you know, if you're at your home, uh, plan ahead there. Uh, stayed late after the totality, um, we expect that big spike in traffic. The more people that stay where they are or stay at their residences means that our first responders have less to deal with in that moment. If we can lower that traffic spike, it'll make it easier on everyone across the county. It'd also make the traffic load lighter. Um, there was a backup of traffic and, and from the two thousand and seventeen total solar eclipse in Kentucky that lasted eight hours. We really like no one to have to sit in eight hours of traffic. That is an awful lot to deal with as an individual. So arriving early and staying late is an important message that we've been trying to get out. Now, E M A has been planning with, uh, county stakeholders for this event for over two and a half years. We've contacted many, many stakeholders. We have an operational emergency response plan that, uh, includes opening the emergency operations center at Delaware County E M A that day. Um, that operational emergency response plan was finished at the end of two thousand and twenty-three, and then in March, um, earlier in March this year, we did our very best to break it with a tabletop exercise. We learned some things. We figured out the things that we needed to do better. So now our plan is even stronger than it was. So sitting where we are now, we have a plan going forward, and I am continuing to intake information about what different first responder groups are doing, what their shift schedules are and where they're gonna be placing folks around the county, just to make sure that everybody has good knowledge of what's gonna going on from that emergency response side. And then working into the day of, we all know that something's gonna pop up that we haven't quite managed to think of, but that's one of the reasons we have the emergency operations center open is so that we can work through and coordinate the needs and the resources there with the folks across the county. Now, I know I talked really fast. Do you have any, uh, questions, uh, for me at all about the solar eclipse?
Any questions?
I do. Um, what's the best website for people to maybe pick a destination throughout Delaware County for all? Because this might help disperse people evenly at all these events.
Yes, um, so Destination Delaware, um, County, which is through Main Street Delaware, has a, uh, their events section on their website has an eclipse section, so all of the events, um, event venues can register themselves there. So then we have, that is probably far the most popular, um, website that has events registered on it because event venues can register themselves. It's also free advertising for them. So, um, countywide, that's the densest list that we have of all the different events going on. So if people are looking for something, that's a good place to go. That is also linked to the Delaware County Eclipse website. So if people go there, they can click through and find it that way as well.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for coming in tonight. Thank you for sharing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have the Sunbury Parkway District Master Plan, and we have Tommy Mosher from M S Consultants who's going to present this evening. Welcome, Mr. Moser.
Good evening. Uh, my name is Tommy Moser. I am with M S Consultants. Um, here to present the Sunbury Parkway Master Plan. Uh, first, I wanted to thank city staff, steering committee members, stakeholders, residents of Sunbury for all of your input into this process. Uh, without all of you vision and what's contained within this plan, uh, wouldn't be what it is. So, um, thanks to all of you. Next slide, please.
You gotta share. Actually, no, I do this, but.
So just a green arrow. You may have been sharing. You wanna try one? I can toggle with it while you continue, if that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
So I can jump in?
Yeah.
Okay.
Go ahead. So, um, I'm gonna walk through really how we got here, uh, which is just walking through the planning process. Really started with the Sunbury, the proposed Sunbury Parkway. Um, we'll talk about the planning process that we've gone through over the last fourteen months or so, and then, um, look at the plans, recommendations, and next steps. So the, um, proposed Sunbury Parkway is a new interchange and roadway alignment that's, uh, starting, uh, at the west end at Africa Road and heads southeast, um, where there's a new interchange that's currently under design. Um, at I seventy-one, and then the Parkway continues east until it reconvenes with thirty-six, thirty-seven. If you could go to the next slide, there's the alignment there. So, um, there's really two sections of this roadway in terms of just how the, the roadway will be designed, although they are very similar. So, um, from Africa Road at the west, uh, heading southeast down to the, uh, Wilson Road extension, which is just, yep, right there. That will be, um, really similar in style to the existing thirty-six, thirty-seven west of the corridor. So you'll have roughly a, a fifty-foot wide median. Uh, and you'll have, um, curb on both the inside and outside of that roadway. Then the eastern part of the Parkway, which is Wilson Road east to thirty-seven into Sunbury, is, um, really shown in this proposed typical section that you see on the presentation here. So you'll have, uh, roughly a, a twenty-two to thirty-foot median. You'll have two, uh, travel lanes. You'll have a wide outside shoulder and a four-foot inside shoulder. Um, and, and both on the, the west part, the entire Parkway will have shared use path on both sides of the roadway, which, uh, will also have a buffer about eight feet for any vegetation and any place making strategies that we'll get into in a little bit here. Next slide, please. So the city annex land around the Parkway, and that really kind of started this process. And there was a need for a vision and a plan for just how the land around that Parkway would be used. So in December of two thousand and twenty-two, planning process was initiated. And, um, the plan's goals were to, to really guide the decisions of local policy, um, makers and leaders, promote the effective and sustainable use of land and resources, and enhance the quality of design elements and branding to maintain cohesiveness with the city. Next slide, please. The plan, uh, analyzed existing conditions of the city of Sunbury. That include demographic information, um, where people are traveling from, um, utilities, just various, uh, existing conditions. And then a market analysis was conducted to identify any unmet demands that existed both within the city and, uh, Delaware County. Gaps in Sunbury, uh, through that market analysis, the gaps in, in Sunbury were also gaps in the county, which is, which is advantageous because it provides, uh, really good, uh, business attraction because of that deficiency in there. So you can see on this slide that, um, generally, one million square feet of additional commercial services, one point four million square feet of additional medical services, six hundred and forty thousand square feet of additional retail services, twenty-four thousand square feet of additional lodging, and two hundred and seventy-eight thousand square feet of additional dining were the gaps that I just mentioned, um, both within the city and the county. Next slide, please.
So Tommy, if I could just interrupt a little bit, um, we, we will make the presentation available. What you have in the, in the packet is the full report. Um, so we just got the mark or the, the, the presentation. We'll all also upload it to the, to the Facebook or to the city's website as well. So just wanted to let folks know, this information is in there. I think Tommy's just pulled it out.
Yeah, I'm just hitting the high notes in the different parts of, of the plan that's in front of you.
Thanks.
Thanks for that, Darren. So as part of the pl- planning process, uh, there was a robust public engagement that was conducted. So steering committee was assembled at the beginning of, uh, the process, and that was, uh, made up of community representatives and leaders, and this steering committee really guided the planning process throughout, um, throughout the process. Um, there were five total meetings with the steering committee, and then stakeholder interviews were also conducted. And this, uh, involved a broad range of community members and really identified and helped establish the density and development characteristics uh, that they wanted to see. And one of those that came out from these stakeholder interviews was Little Walnut Creek and how that's to be utilized as a recreational asset. Additionally, there were two community open houses that were, were held. One was in person and another one was held virtually. And during those community open houses, uh, there was input gathered on the three development nodes along the corridor, and that's something I'll, I'll get into, um, in more detail here in just a bit. Finally, there was a public survey that was conducted. There were four hundred and ninety-six respondents to that survey. And through that survey, uh, it informed really the future of land use and housing recommendations, uh, along the corridor. Next slide, please. So, yeah, the plan recommendations that we're, we'll, I'll get into now is, is, uh, establishing what those development nodes are along the Parkway. The future land use, uh, plan along the Parkway, and then the implementation recommendations and place making strategies to go along with it. Next slide, please. So development nodes, as I mentioned, this was, um, guided in, in the community open houses. You have three distinct areas as you travel from west to east into Sunbury. So you first start at the highway node, which is anything from Africa Road to, uh, Galena. And really, the goal of, of this highway node is a mixed-use destination type district. Next is a transitional zone, shown there in green. That is to transition from the high intensity highway node to a lower intensity existing node as you get, travel west on the Parkway into Sunbury. And finally, um, there's the existing node, and the goal of, of, of this node is really to preserve the charm of central Sun, Sunbury while also tying into all the different elements that are being introduced along the Parkway and, and the other nodes. Next slide, please. So in concert with those development nodes are, uh, the various, um, land use types that you see here. And in the following slides, I'm gonna go through just what each one of these, uh, different land uses are. Um, but in a real broad sense, the highway node um, supports the higher intensity de- development. The goal was, um, a lot of mixed use. Um, but this is also where you see some of the, uh, more traditional residential housing that you see here in yellow. That's, um, uh, south of the Parkway. And then as you get into the, uh, transitional node, that's where you have, um, your, your park space really surrounding um, some of the, uh, believe it's, yeah, neighborhood residential and, uh, neighborhood mixed-use districts. And then finally, as you continue east, that's where you come to, uh, Sunbury with those same, uh, neighborhood residential and neighborhood mixed-use districts. Next slide, please. So the residential district, this is your traditional low-density, uh, type housing. Uh, many of the existing, um, residential areas within Sunbury are representative of this type of district. Next slide, please. Now, the neighborhood residential, it provides a more diversity of housing, and it, it increases from a low to a medium density, um, in that housing type. So you can, it, it supports duplexes, um, triplexes, fourplexes. It's, it's really more, um, customizable and helps to fit the, the space configuration, could provide more walkability, more green space, uh, which are some of the secondary uses noted here as well. Uh, and fa- and finally, with the neighborhood residential, although it's kind of an urban feel to it, you can set the architectural styles that blend with the residential district, so it looks very cohesive with, um, the single-family residence. Next slide, please. Next, you have, uh, neighborhood mixed-use districts. Um, these are mixed-use commercial buildings to help meet daily retail and service needs of the residents. It's not, um, going to be your, um, higher or taller store buildings. Um, so it's capped at, at fifty-five feet in, in height. Um, and it does have wider saw- sidewalks to really promote foot traffic. So you can think of a lot of window shopping within this district as a, a way to, to think about it. Next slide, please. You have the Gateway Residential. Um, so this encourages medium to high densible, density in walkable blocks. So, um, you can, it's really getting that integration of the mixed use with this and, and building more higher density as opposed to the neighborhood mixed use, which doesn't quite get that high density mark. Next slide, please. This is the Gateway Mixed Use District. So this is an important district because it supports, supports, um, the, a successful mixed-use districts just overall. Um, it incorporates different and diverse use groups in both vertical and horizontal orientations. What I mean by that is, um, if you can think about a, a vertical orientation is, uh, two or more mixed-use projects could be, you know, retail, bar, restaurant, that are stacked vertically in the same building. And then horizontal use is a single-use building that's located adjacent to another. So you could have a bar restaurant next to another retail-type building, for example. What's important to note with this district is that equal weight should be given to both these vertical and horizontal mixed uses within this district in order to really yield the best results for what you're trying to accomplish. Next slide, please. Is the Gateway Commercial and Industrial District. This really supports regional and local travelers and tends to be more auto-oriented and geared toward industrial development. And, um, on the land use map, you'll see this really closer, uh, north towards more of those industrial uses that are currently in existence. Next is, uh, your preserved open space. So this is undeveloped areas, natural resources, and supports active and passive recreation. And this was really identified within the transitional node there. So with all that being said, and, uh, kind of laying out the, the proposed land use, um, we, we get into some recommendations for, uh, next steps. So, uh, first on the priority list, I think, is to create a zoning overlay so that development that comes in can meet the vision that's identified within this plan and for the community. And then, you know, looking at numbers two and three here to conduct a zoning audit and, um, update your zoning code and map. That's more of a long-term, uh, outlook that looks to really solidify, um, these land uses that are identified here. Additionally, there's, uh, some place making and utility recommendations. Uh, on the place making side, it's important to, um, set design guidelines for what those, the place making will look like and incorporate that with your zoning code updates. As well as create a sense of place for the Parkway District. As well as create a sense of place for the parkway district, so you want it to have kind of its own uh feel, if you will. Um, and that that's all part of uh the place making strategy. And finally, uh for uh utilities to support development, you've got to extend um your water, your sewer and your fiber. Just um as a as a way of making sure that development will need those those items. Um, finally, uh, we've got the place making recommendations. Um, this is really to help establish kind of that that feel of the of the parkway. So establishing the uh types of of street trees. Um, bike parking, your your green spaces, pedestrian lighting. Your crosswalk striping and um even trash cans that can be uh branded just to Sunbury or the parkway. You know, however you you want to to ta- carry it forward. Thank you. Any questions? That's that's all I had for kind of overviewing the the plan.
Yes, oh.
Well, go ahead. No, good. You might answer mine.
Well, I I wasn't going to answer any questions. What I was going to say is uh thank you to Tommy and MS Consultants for for the help on this. Uh, we are not asking council to do anything this evening. You're basically receiving the report. Uh, from MS Consultants this evening. We'll uh we'll schedule uh discussion on this at the next council meeting. Uh, and then develop a strategy for how do we go about implementing the recommendations that are in here? Or at least the recommendations that we want to accept as a community. I did want to maybe just build on a couple of points so that that Tommy had mentioned. Uh, I I it was very impressive that we had almost five hundred responses to the survey. I mean, the community really did weigh in um on on the survey or on this on the parkway. And their thoughts about what they wanted to see. So a lot of the images that you see in the report. That was part of the public input processes, like, you know, what are the types of buildings that you want to see? It wasn't necessarily what are the types of uses you want to see, you know, how what what's the design, what's the density, what's the character uh of these structures? So again, it it's not, you know, it wasn't universal in terms of where everybody landed, but that's some of what you're seeing in the report itself. And then the other thing I I I also want to call out is, but there was a very extensive process done. Uh, in terms of stakeholder engagement at the very, very outset, which I think was instrumental in beginning to kind of think about. The sun or the parkway in terms of the these nodes and and kind of how how the parkway would develop and and integrate with the with the city. So um really got good feedback from the stakeholders on that. So I think there's a lot in this report. Again, we're not asking you to take action this evening. Want you to take a look at it for the next couple of weeks and then, like I said, I'll come back with a little bit more detail on what to do next.
Okay.
But I do some of the things that stand out to me is um. You talked about the gateway residential. That is definitely high-dense to me. Those look high-dense. And usually in something. And I don't see it on the map. Where where was that supposed to be?
So your gateway residential is um going to be. In really in that highway node area, so around the interchange. Um. That's where it's really concentrated. You have both the gateway mixed-use and the gateway residential. Um, primarily east of of that interchange. Um, so really going to like Galena Road to the interchange, that's the mixed-use district. Where the idea is that as you pull off the interstate and come into the parkway. And as you may be trying to go to Sunbury, you're now entering that mixed-use district. And then that will slowly transition to a lower lower-density. Um, type housing as you continue east before you eventually get into.
So that gateway residential, it seems just south of the of the gateway. Uh, mixed use, is that right? The reds are pretty similar, so I'm just. Yeah, so there it's directly that mixed density is just south of that. Uh, I think if I'm looking at the colors right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And there is, there is a section there as well that's um kind of either or gateway residential or gateway mixed-use. Um, and then you also have a big portion of the mixed use as you look west of the interchange um going up towards Africa Road.
Yeah, and and to that point, what I said, what I would add is that. Tommy didn't mention it, but uh one of the one of the things that's called out here as well is that we do think as you're closer to the to the interchange. That a catalytic uh user, um employer, you know, is also a very appropriate site. So not everything that sits at the interstate or interchange is going to be housing. And again, there there's, there was the economic analysis done to identify the gaps and begin to help us understand what we. You know, what other uses we might be able to track uh out there that the market will support.
Yeah, that out of the freeway, I think the uh the gateway mixed use, the medical center, the research and development office, large, large retail. Um, hotels. Um, and the high-density residential next to it is would be in the pink. I mean, that would. I can see that going on. I think, you know, high-density, I have a little bit of issue with high-density houses because it does promote crime. One other thing that um you had said there would be a new zoning overlay. Who's going to be planning that?
So so that, I think, is one of the action steps that we'll have to take next. So what they're saying is that they they these these um. Recommended future land uses, I mean, they don't happen on their own. Our current zoning code doesn't allow for these types of uses at the. At the density or the scale that's discussed here. So so an overlay is just one technique for being able to um be able to kind of implement these standards. So that that's certainly one. I mean, altering the zoning code is certainly another as well. And that's what we will be charged with doing as a community. You know, now that we've received the report, I think we have to figure out how we want to go ahead and implement that.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I just have um a statement. That as you're talking about um all of the community engagement that we had. It just kind of like had a little bit of welling up of pride of that. I'm really proud to to work with a group that takes what our residents. Um, what their feedback is so importantly, and that we're oh, we're always engaging them and saying like. This is, this is what's going on and I just, I'm just grateful that we do that and I'm I'm kind of proud to be a part of that process.
And to that extent, will there be another one?
Another.
Community engagement?
Yes, for Daryl.
Yeah, I was gonna say, so so, yeah, I do anticipate there's some maybe some additional. If we if we decide that we want to adopt some of this as part of an amendment to our comprehensive plan, there is a public process that would be involved there as well. So, yeah. And and the zoning, any amendment changes to the zoning would have public hearings associated with an opportunity for.
Those are both a planning and zoning and city council for both of those. I must, it it sounds easy to implement an overlay district. This isn't um. A rapid process. That is, that is a recommendation. You know, so uh we've kicked around on the steering committee and uh, you know, on planning and zoning that. You know, we don't even have like the core zoning to fit some of the similar to like when we created the limited industrial district last year. It's like an overlay is supposed to be maybe an an additional layer or guidance. I mean, it can have architectural standards and um densities. But, you know, our core commercial districts may not even foster like this type of development. So we may be building zoning codes from the ground up and that's not a fast process. That's a. Three, four, five-month process per district. I just wanted to thank the steering committee. I also wanted to thank uh city council two years ago for uh funding this initiative. Um, I I think I've mentioned it a couple of times, you know, we've, there's no better time to plan than, you know, in the past. And since we can't do that, we're planning now. Um, so it's, this is a a great foundation. The output is definitely going to help guide the future. And I I think we maybe didn't hit enough on, you know, like the economic, uh, you know, underlay of all this. It's it's nice when we say, you know, what are our gaps in our, you know, in the city and the county, you know, we. All the things that we know we want and need, uh, like medical services, you know, there's a huge gap that the data prove that. But being able to, you know, land a hospital is not like landing a business. You know, these are nonprofit in nature, um typically require, you know, a lot of local funding to get them out of the ground. Just to incentivize a hospital to come. And that's one specific example. But like the economic engine that needs to to power this. Um, you know, you do need to have pockets of density to be able to do that. Because if you have single-family homes on acre lots all the way up and down the parkway. It will be upside down forever and sewer line maintenance and road maintenance, it will never pay for itself. And so, yeah, there's a road, but that means everybody who lives in the city pays higher taxes to subsidize it. And that's, that's not the intent. The intent is to capture this like once-in-a-lifetime, uh, you know, transportation improvement. And be able to capitalize on it and and make it a great place to live and work and play. The other thing we didn't focus on a whole lot in this presentation was just the the focus on walkability in all nodes. And, you know, we have been meeting with hospital chains and large employers. And they say it's very important for their workforce to be able to live, work and play, you know, in close proximity of one another. That's the type of workforce that they're attracting. That's what, you know, doctors and medical students are telling us. Um, I mean, face-to-face when we're meeting with them, it's like, I would love to be able to live in a suburb. Sunbury being a suburb that has a hospital, that has restaurants, places to work out, shop, dine and live. And I can ride my bike. I mean, that's what we're hearing. So.
Yeah.
This this may seem counterintuitive to, you know, how we've done things in the past, but that's because we're responding to what's here right now.
Mm-hmm. The layout is important.
I was just gonna add, I I agree with you completely because people are already going to Westerville or Delaware or Polaris or Easton to get these things now. And as a resident of Sunbury, I'd like to not have to drive that far. I mean, to have that in your backyard, not in town. Because we want to keep that small-town feel, but to be able to have that in your community and keep those dollars here in the community. I think is uh is really important. I think it is a long, long-term vision and uh it needs to be done right to make sure that, you know. Like you said, ten years from now, people aren't looking at, oh, that was a mistake. But uh, but I think it's going to be great for Sunbury in the sense of attraction and for the people already living here as far as options, so.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Mr. Mosher? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your partnership on this journey.
Good bet. Thanks.
All right, we are on to the fire department and unscheduled slash unscheduled uh visitor. We've got Lieutenant here. We also have Murray Neff here, ready to tag team if you need a little, you know, him to jump into the ring with you and help on the update.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, good deal.
All right, so uh my name is Mark Carey. I'm a lieutenant with the B S T N G Fire District. Um, for those of you that may not know. Our intention is to have somebody from our command staff out uh monthly to meet with you. And just kind of make sure we answer any questions uh you may have and try to provide some uh updates with the department. Um, so I just have a few things to hit on tonight. Um, that would not be in Mr. Ness's report per se. Uh. So uh, starting out here, um. It, I'm sure everybody is aware, but we did have a bond issue. Uh, it did pass. We're very thankful for that. Um, very thankful for the voters that turned out for that. We know that there was a lot of issues on last night. Um, not just in this area, but in other areas that did not bear so well. So uh, we definitely appreciate that support. Uh, just a quick update on the second fire station right now. The conceptual uh design was approved by our board and renderings are, they should be available soon. Um, now that this bond has passed, uh, we'll be moving forward with uh transferring the land. Where the second station will be. Um, that was something that they wanted to hold off on until they knew for sure that the bond was going to pass. So that's in motion right now. Conceptual drawings will soon move into the uh official development engineering and blueprint phase. And following that will be uh the bid documents being prepared. So um quite a process ahead. Um, we're working through this. Um, fortunately, our our board and Chief Kovach are working very hard on this. Uh, something that this is something that Chief Kovach has dealt with at in uh his experience at his previous department. So it's good having him on board to have that experience already. Um, tentatively, we're estimating to break ground for the second station in the fall of this year. And hoping that uh that will be complete sometime in late fall of twenty-five. Uh, tornado update. Uh, the National Weather Service had talked with our command staff about the potential they may upgrade. Um, the EF1 that passed through here to an EF2. Um. Most of the severe damage to our district was isolated to Southern Berkshire Township. And the village of Galena. Berkshire Lake Campground suffered the most extensive damage with several of the units destroyed during the storm. Uh, cleanup efforts are continuing and they probably will for some time. Um, and we are in daily communication with the Delaware County EMA in reference to the storm damage assessment. So they are continuing to work with us and make sure that everything's being handled appropriately and taken care of. So with that, that's all I have tonight, short and sweet, unless you may have any questions. If I can't answer the question, I'll make sure to relay it back to Chief Kovach to get you the appropriate answer.
Any questions or comments for the fire department, Lieutenant Carey?
Thank you for all of your work this one Thursday. I mean, you were out working hard, no sleep.
Yeah, absolutely. I I uh I can't take any credit personally. That was my shift, but I actually was off that night. So uh, the rest of my career definitely worked pretty hard that night. I know they ended up having to call in quite a few people to help cover calls that night. Um, I think they said that uh they finished the evening with. The ballpark of thirty calls total that night, so they pretty much ran non-stop that entire night. So, yeah, very, very proud of our crews and they did a great job. So, yep.
Yes, sir.
Either the units destroyed at Berkshire have any occupants?
I'm sorry, what's that?
Were either the units destroyed at the campground, did they have occupants?
Um, I I don't have the information on that. I um. I do not believe that they were occupied at the time of the damage. Um. But I I couldn't answer that. That would probably be a Chief Kovach's question for sure.
Just wondering in light of that and the Indian Lake, you know, how it doesn't go through this all the time. We're not Kansas. But those pictures sure looked a lot like Kansas to me. And I wondered for those people that are in those parks, what resources do they have? What's available to them? What knowledge do they have about where they can go? When you're looking at the weather, you know that thing is bearing down on us. Because there's nobody that should be in something like that when a tornado goes through. It's just not safe. But I think about the the number of people that are there and what options do they have? Sure, they've got friends or family across the street, but where is a public shelter? Where can they go? Versus just staying put.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I I I don't know that I have a whole lot of information on that. I think uh I think EMA may be able to answer that more appropriately. Um, they uh, I believe, have different options for shelter for places like that. Uh, maybe not well-known, um, but definitely something to look at for sure.
I have a big new one, but uh I think in like retrospect, it's in Delaware, you're backtracking through the storm by the time. You're getting the warning here, so it's a good, that's a good question. Good problem to solve.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
On a less serious note, um, you could be a very good ventriloquist.
You think so?
Yes.
I appreciate that.
Thank you so much for going up. It's the first time we've ever met. That's how comfortable I am with strangers. Thank you very much, Lieutenant Carey.
Thank you.
All right, good deal. Thank you, Mr. Neff.
Yes, that was my best committee report ever.
All right. So you are in the committee reports. Um, Mr. Neff, do you have any?
Um, that really, that pretty much summed it all up. Um, there was some preliminary drawing we did go through at the fireboard meeting. Uh, where I was very, very happy to see the amount of work and planning that goes in to just kind of. Saving a dollar for the taxpayers. Because I think um the reduction of the sprinkler system and the fire station, which is kind of. The reduction of sprinkler system in the fire station, which is kind of counterintuitive to have a sprinkler system in a fire department, in a fire station. But that, that alone saved, that measure reduced, it saved three hundred thousand dollars. Roughly three hundred thousand dollars. So I think it was very, um. Very cool to see how diligent everybody is, is, uh, being and saving money and using taxpayers. So.
Great.
It's really all I have.
Right, great. Thank you for the update. Mr. Martin. Thank you for your service, uh, yesterday. You worked the polls. You were gonna mention something new and unfinished.
Fifteen and a half hour day.
Yeah, I must've came during your lunch. I didn't see you there.
I didn't work this location. I have three other locations I was responsible for.
Okay, boss, I got you. Good deal. Thank you for your service.
We had a very low turnout, but. It's one of the most interesting things just thinking about this. We had, I was, one of my locations was Harlem Township Hall. And we had several people come in wanting to vote on the Harlem Westerville merger. And one lady was adamant. She came in and she didn't want a Democrat ballot. She didn't want a Republican ballot. She wanted an issues only ballot. And the, the lady that was, you know, doing the assignment of the ballot. She said, uh, there are no issue only ballots here. She said, well, what about the Harlem Westerville merger? And they explained to her, well, it's, it's not on the ballot yet. It'll be November if they go through and get enough signatures to even get it on the ballot. So. But there are people with yard signs out there that say vote no on the merger. And it's not an issue at this point. That made for a pretty interesting day at Harlem Township.
Thank you for your service. Mrs. Cooper?
Nothing tonight. We have an events committee tomorrow, so I'll have an update next council meeting about that.
Okay, good deal. We do have a planning and zoning commission meeting on Monday. Mr. Grumley?
Uh, yes, we had our finance committee meeting tonight, uh, at six thirty and it was a busy agenda. Obviously, we'll be published detailed notes. So I'm, I'll just hit the real high, high lights, but, uh, we had a. Uh, Rita update on, uh, people moving in the area and, uh, the new house being built as far as the process. The city's gonna take an extra step to help ensure that, uh, folks are connected with Rita to make sure that they are in that database and, um. Understand what Rita is paying the taxes. Um, talked about a new trail from Big Waua Intermediate School to. Um, uh, Place Ponds, uh, that the city and school district are gonna work together to provide. Uh, fiber connectivity is hot and, uh, we have an advisory service. Uh, services coming that we're working with to help provide guidance in our, um, developing a strategy which will best fit Sunbury for now and in the future. Uh, and, uh, we talked about some finance, uh, bank reconciliation and, and comparison reports. Um, so that's really the high level. And then, like I said, there'll be more detail in the, uh, specific, uh. Uh, notes itself, so.
Thank you very much. Sir Drex.
I'm in the events committee tomorrow, so.
All right, good deal. Thank you. All right, we are on to the police report. We have Chief Rob Howard.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I just wanna cover like item one on the report, um. C T did a great job with getting the G I S mapping done for our radar signs. When you're able to pull that up and look at it, I'm, I'm hoping at the next meeting, Officer Lawbacher will be back. He's in Orlando right now and he's put a lot of time in this, so I didn't want to steal this thunder. So, uh, I'm gonna see if he can put together a presentation for the next council meeting. But I think you'll be pleased with the work that C T has done to get, uh, get that in. So the public can view.
I've got a sneak peek at that. Uh, I think that's. Pretty awesome stuff. It's gonna really help us in the future. Target resources.
Yeah, I'm not gonna lie. When you first brought that to me, I was like, what is, how's this gonna work for us? How's it gonna help? And I wasn't really sure about it. But after seeing it, I mean, it's definitely a benefit for, for us and C T as well for studies and. I think it's just a benefit across the board. Do you have any questions on two through six? Because I have two more things that I wanna just cover real quick.
Any questions before we go into the updates?
I will tell you, we had six letters of interest turned in for the sergeant's posting that came down. Monday.
That's great.
So there's a lot of interest in that. One thing, I got, I got two items here that didn't make it to the report that happened over the weekend. Um, a few council meetings ago, we had brought up the fact of lock your cars. Don't allow people easy access. Over the weekend, we had. A suspicious vehicle that was reported to us that was in the apartments behind Kroger. An officer responded over there who was just off duty, was heading home. He locates the car, yet goes back into Prairie Run area. Mark Cars get there, they find it at. Fayetteville and Dewfall, rolling through the streets, blacked out. They go to stop it, it takes off. The car stolen out of Columbus. We didn't know until later, but they had got into just a few vehicles instead of, you know, usually we go take twenty reports. That wasn't the case that night. I don't think they. Got engineer what they wanted to. Um, I guess I just wanna put out a public thank you to Genoa Township Police Department. Because they were able to, uh, they spiked the car on Route Three. They had two attempts. First officer missed them. The second one. Uh, was able to get the tires spiked. The car went maybe a quarter of a mile before it come to a stop with four flat tires. Um, that was the only damage. We ended up taking four into custody, three at that time, one was found later, two of those were reported as missing out of Franklin County. So. Uh, I, I really appreciate the help from them and that could have been totally different or. Just, just. To be able to work together was amazing.
Add one thing on that. Um, first of all, Genoa is excellent to partner with. We have Genoa officers that live in the city.
Yes.
You know. I know I bounce ideas off of them. We've toured their facilities. They're a really close asset and resource for us. Um, and just on that, and if I get out of my lane, unintended, let me know. But there are other jurisdictions in central Ohio. That are not pursuing criminals that come into their communities and more or less like. They're driving fast, like don't attempt to pursue certain cases. You know, when there's a danger to the public, you know, we make those calls, but. Our, with Genoa and Sunbury, I think what we're doing is we're, we're sending a message that if you come into our town. We are gonna catch you. We are gonna pursue you. We are gonna prosecute.
Uh, Genoa has a, they do have a no pursuit policy, just as, so does, as well as Delaware County. But when they're able to. Deploy stop sticks, um, things like that to help. When I say no pursuit policy. That doesn't mean they're not gonna chase you ever. What that means is if it's not a violent offense. That they're not gonna chase you, but if it's something. Life or death, they will. So it was, it's good to be able to work with them and. And get that taken care of on that traffic stop and those, those kids back where they needed to be. The second item was our drone program. Genoa had a, they called the other night. They had a boat capsize. They were going out on a water rescue. Officer Ramirez was in. He seems to be the lucky one to draw the straw every time. He was able to respond with the drone. Officer Plummer is his spotter. And, uh. They found the first individual on the bank. I wanna say it was within eight minutes of arriving there. I guess he was pretty badly injured, but he was, he was alive. They said that Officer Ramirez stated that the only, the water was so cold that night that the only. Thing that was shown on the infrared was the guy's face. That's the only heat signature he got. Um, wasn't able to locate the second individual. He was found probably fifty yards away. Um, they tried to revive him and. Were not successful. My hat's off to those guys. They train hard and in the short time that we've been up and running, they've, they've done nothing but make us look good. So. So if you have any questions on that, let me add too that he didn't know if he could fly that night. For the water rescue because the winds were forty mile an hour. And he said, when he put the drone up, the first alert we he got was high winds, you know, check your speeds, that type, but he was able to. To fly around the, the. Woodline there and find that first individual on the bank.
Um, Chief, I just wanted to say a couple of things. I was reading this email that was shared with us about Officer Alexander. And I also wanted to share with you that the other night, um, I was picking my daughter up from cheerleading. She, she, she goes to a cheer. Gym in Sunbury on Frederick's Road and a lot of the families that go there are in the Marrow County area. And whenever they have something they wanna complain about Sunbury, they pick me up. And this lady came up to me and she said that, and it was a compliment to your police department. She said that she was in Sunbury earlier in the day. She had locked her keys in her car. And Officer Ramirez, um, helped her. And it can be, if you've ever lost, locked your keys in their car, it can be frustrating. She was flustered and upset. And she said that he was patient and kind with her and it really made an impression on her. So thank you to Officer Ramirez. And I also just thought this was interesting. You already know all this and you may even be familiar with this. But the other day, our Rotary Club had a guest speaker from this group called Be Smart for Kids. I'm not sure if you're familiar with them, but they talk about gun safety. What they don't talk about is gun policy and gun laws. They just talk about gun safety. And one thing that I found particularly interesting, because you talked about this a lot with, um. Car break-ins is they have found that, um, folks will lock their guns up appropriately in their home, but they don't always do it in their vehicles. And this, um, they've done research and they've followed like, I don't know, drones or whatever on, on folks breaking into cars. And they've seen folks, um, just go in the glove compartment and under the seat. And if they don't find a gun, then they move on. And so I just thought that was really interesting because we're always, I'm always telling folks like lock your cars, lock your cars. But it's also important to appropriately lock your guns too. Um, so I'm sure you, I mean, you already know that and you may be familiar with that, but it was just interesting. So I thought I would share.
Thanks for sharing.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, hats off to the drone program again. I think that's the second time in council within recent time where you've talked about locating a person very fast. And rapidly, cold weather.
We've asked and if, if time permits, uh, we would like to have them come in and do like a quarterly update just to, because there's more than just those. Couple that I've shared with you, um. I think they would be happy to come in and do that.
We forgot to mention, uh. Right around the same time, Friday morning, uh, we had Officer E Bright, you know, the guy who does all the technology with it. He was up in the air as I'm in Galena. He's flying over Galena taking storm damage photos. And we're syncing up with the county sheriff's office as they're doing Berlin Township and down power lines. We're doing down barns and silos and trees and damage. And that all synced up with the EMA. So, and. That was, I mean. At Officer Wade, I mean, you, you worked all night. Wade came in in the morning, um, got those guys out there and. Uh, I mean, that's invaluable and it's point in time, like before it's cleaned up. For many reasons.
I, I know you touched on it, but I will say the way that. Fire, EMS, county pedestrians, that was. That was crazy.
Totally agree.
Yep.
Anything else for the chief? Thank you. All right, we are on to the engineers, or excuse me, the administrator report, excuse me.
Yep, nope. I, uh, just a couple of really quick points. Thank you to, uh, the council members who were able to join me for the Mid Ohio Regional Planning. Uh, State of the Region event. Hopefully, uh, you found that informative, um. Again, mostly focusing on housing and transportation and, um, and, and planning accordingly. I mean, as we know, central Ohio is growing rapidly and so, uh, it's great that we've got an organization like Morphy to help, help coordinate those efforts. So. Um, I've got a couple of other items in here. I'd be happy to answer any questions on those, but I did wanna add. Uh, one other thing, uh, Mr. Martin was asking me about it. You may have noticed at the corner of, um. Cherry and Columbus, um, that there's a large pole attached. And Cherry and Vernon, attached to our, uh, one of our lake poles. Uh, this is part of ODOT's, uh, study of the thirty seven, thirty six corridor. And so that's what those are. So I think they're also doing traffic counts on Cherry and State Route Three as well, so.
I've seen those all up and down thirty seven.
Yep.
Um, the traffic house and on the freeway, Interstate seventy one, as you're getting on and off, I think they have them right off the freeway.
Anyway, uh, if anybody's got any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise. We can move on.
Questions? All right, thank you very much. All right, we are on to the engineers report. Mr. Whitehead.
Thank you, Mayor. Dropped my computer tablet. Operating with, uh, I broke it and I'm operating with paper and I don't, I don't know, I don't like it.
At least it wasn't your leggy butt this time.
So I, um, I put together my report. And, um, it's, it's that same old stuff and I, I really don't wanna go over all the, the details of that. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer. There's only really one, um. One item on there of. Any significant information and that's Reservoir Park, um. Still working away on that. We had a few surprises. We run into some underground structures that have. Uh, some foundations of, you know, that the yard out there where the old plant, our old plant was, you. Expect you run in that kind of stuff. We had a contingency. We're not, we haven't run anything that's been too, too outrageous, but slowed us down a little bit. But still on schedule and, um. As is today's nature with construction, we've run into some delivery time. Delivery lead schedule issues that have held us up for some equipment, but we've been able to make some substitutions and so. Been able to course correct and we're, we're still on schedule out there, but stopped by working away, putting some pipes in the ground and, uh, things are on schedule out there. But, but really I wanted to focus on some other things tonight. Again. If you, I'm, I'm sure you read diligently through my report and if you've got any questions on any of that, feel free to fire away. I wanted to talk about some other things, particularly, I don't know you left, but Tommy talked about the overlay and. Then you guys launched in, into some, um. Some points that were really good. And, uh, Mayor, your State of the Union, you talked about. You're really looking forward. And tonight I heard a few comments about. Let's think about moving forward and. The things we do now. Uh, shape our future as far as our costs, operation and maintenance, how we look in the future. And, and we gotta start thinking strategically about what we do and. And, and these zoning overlays, these zoning districts, um. These legislative things, we're, we're a community that's really on the rise and we, we do things right now. You know, our, in the future, we'll be thankful for it. If we don't, we won't, obviously. And so I just wanna let you know some of the things we're really strategically looking forward to and I. I, uh, really compliment you all for just saying the things you're saying, but also walking that talk. And working with staff and the way they think. It's, it's really pretty impressive. And some of the things, you know, that the chief was talking about, the radar signs, that's just a small portion of what we can be doing. And are doing. With G I S, I know I've touted this and probably, probably a little overboard, but I do want you to know we're. As a result of our last meeting, we talked about the trail gaps, putting into the thoroughfare plan that. When in the mobility you mentioned tonight, as we look into that, well. We're looking into, to taking, we've got a great trail system here. We've got a great connectivity. And we can take that and fill in those, we, we can analyze that and strategically look to the future to fill in those areas where we. Have minor gaps in the trail systems and big gaps. In ten years from now, this will be a premier community where people will be coming to town and. Wanna bike, wanna walk, wanna, wanna come to this community to take advantage of the live, work, play. And we, if we look forward and do that in a way, using the tools that we have at our fingertips now. We'll be, we'll be thankful for that. We're starting to do that and it's all because you guys are forward looking and we're helping you. And so we have that and it'll be ability evaluation. We've been talking about that at our speech escapes committee. I've got some young engineers out evaluating your pavement systems and we're putting that into the G I S so that you'll have a robust system to go through and. Having them take pictures, put those into the G I S so we'll know how they were rated. Have a long-term, um, forward-looking system where they'll have that rating. Um, you can go in and see what the rating was. Uh, and I'll go to the details and all that, but there'll be an attribute table that we'll follow yearly for that. And I've told you about that. Well, can you continue to follow that so that? Next time you have a question, we'll just, just like you have with the radar signs, we'll click on it. There it is. This is what we did in twenty twenty-four. And when it's twenty fifty and we'll know what Manuel did on the pavement. Um, we do, we're doing the same thing with economic zones and the cemetery plots and, and all these other things that are just, they're helping us to, to chart our path forward. Um, and the things we talked, the time we talked about today with the zoning overlay district and you asked about it, you all met. You all met Alyssa Alyssa uh Duffy and. The things that she can do with the zoning and she'll she can look at that zoning district and and we can look at that kind of stuff and we can. Uh supplement that with the GIS and with the other work that she's done across the country. I'm looking at that from a strategic standpoint. Looking to these gateway zones, these highway zones and the existing zones in a way that is forward-thinking. And one thing I wanted to talk about that we haven't really talked about in detail here and this stuff will come. I'm not trying to burden you with all of this. We'll take this through the process from services up to this up to council and you can. You will we'll vet through it thoroughly, but we talked about the stormwater legislation and that came through some. That came, that's gonna will come through to you through a a hard way. We had to struggle through that and you many of you have. Witnessed the struggles that that got to you with. One thing that I'm kind of foreshadowing is if we don't look a little more closely at our right-of-way legislation. And this has come come to us through the fiber, you know, fiber companies come to us, want to do this, want to do that, want to do it fast, want to put this ring in. And 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 so kind of looking forward to that, I've talked to some of our peer communities um Grove City, Potasko. Uh Delaware, asking them, well, how do you deal with these guys? Because you've got, you know, four or five different. Fiber companies, let alone gas companies, electric companies, telecommunications, and they're just going to rip up you right away. Well, how do you control these guys? Well, they in their cities and they're long-established cities. We're not, we don't have that advantage, but we're having the pressures that they're having. But we don't have the legislation in place to control our right-of-way. So so I'm looking at them for some guidance to put in. Some legislations that we can plagiarize, but plagiarize in the way that. But let's look to get some legislation in place so we can we can of of course tailor to our needs, but not have um. Not have to put up with those growing pains that we otherwise would have to if we didn't do the forward-thinking. Uh things that you've talked about Mayor and the State of the Union, the State of the City address and the rest had talked about in the meeting. So. I just wanted to let you know that we're in the place where we're taking some of these things and with the GIS. With our with some legislation in the stormwater area, with this work in the right-of-way legislation. Uh with the zoning code uh things and with the utilities, I know it's taken us a long time to look at the little on a creek interceptor. The golf course road, uh Domigan Road, Carter's Corner Road, the thoroughfare planning, and now we've taken the trails into it, which is a brilliant idea. Uh to to look at those gaps, but we're thinking of this thoroughly, thoughtfully um with the end in mind. And sharpening the saws will go along. And um and I think I think sometimes it's good to take a pause and not. Just look at the the little mundane stuff that's on this list, but talk about these big picture things and let you know we're. We are focusing on these and I I encourage you to ask me questions about those things, not just these little things. So so as we go along, I just want you to know that. Let's let's focus on those and that we are working on those issues. And let's, you know, back up and take that big picture look on occasion. And um I know you are. I want you to know that we're here to assist you with that as well. That's my uh that's my story for today.
We were gonna say, what officer, you read this?
I am here for Sunbury.
Well, and I just want to say he's a really great asset because I have um called him before and and he has just. Walked me through things and explained things to me and reiterated things and 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 does it with patience and kindness. So. I appreciate that and this is great. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. All right, good deal. We are on to, we're gonna skip right over resolutions, go to ordinances, no third readings. We're on the second reading ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot oh one dot one, first amended. And it ordinance amending the twenty twenty-four annual appropriations. We need to take an action on.
So I was just gonna say, so this is the item we talked about in the finance committee meeting. So yes, we have an amendment to the to the to the reading. Dave, did you want to do a vote on?
Way to do it since we've had readings without this language. Um I think that amendment is in red line.
It is.
Something was identified just between your last reading and this one. Uh we'd like to do a motion to amend the ordinance to include those red line changes.
And I'd like to make that motion.
That motion by Mr. Martin.
Second?
Second by Mr. Grumney. In discussion on uh the amendment. All right, roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Six yeas, motion approved.
All right, so we've already done the reading. Um I don't need to do anything else at this point. We're looking to go to three readings on this. We are on to first readings. Ordinance number twenty twenty-four dot zero eight, an ordinance authorizing the city administrator to issue a charitable solicitation permit. Pursuant to Sunbury codified ordinance three seventy-one dot oh six and declaring an emergency. Is there some urgency around this?
Well, the uh the event's in May, so we've still got a little bit of time. Um. But but this is pretty routine. I mean, each year the uh the churches come to us and ask for this. Um what they do is they'll stand by the the roadside at Cherry and uh Cherry and. Free and Cherry and Miller.
Miller and.
Miller and three, Miller and Cherry. Yeah, and uh so Friday evening, Saturday morning, um I've got the dates. I didn't put them in here, but um. So it's again pretty standard. So if we uh if we wanted somebody from the from the church to be here, I've uh indicated that. That I could do that and we'd still um you know, have action in adequate time, but. If you're comfortable with it, you could act as well, whatever whatever is the will of council.
It's up to city council.
The only question I have is several years ago, somebody somewhere in Ohio. Was run over by a car that was doing a solicitation along the road like that. And Sunbury adopted some ordinance that said they didn't want that happening in Sunbury. And and I don't know if it just meant that kids weren't allowed to be involved in it or what, but I would like to have. Our attorney weigh in on whether or not that's currently legal for to happen in Sunbury.
Well, then you have to issue this. It takes legislation to do it. I think that's what was done was they have to apply. And I think they come each year. I can't remember exactly what they say, but I don't think they have anybody adult, anybody but adult.
It's only adults.
They said, you know, we're very careful about how we. Permission. You know, we we kind of stand there until somebody motions us. We're not standing out there. You know, when they move on us to approach, we'll approach, but other than that, we're off to the side. So.
We've become, this is the earliest they've come. I remember a couple of years ago, we were some pandemic-ish um. Came at the last minute, but we've we've always approved it. I guess that's what I'm trying to say.
Right.
I have no problem passing this right now, so it's not on the agenda. I I one hundred percent support this. If we want to let it ride through the entire reading process, it's up to you guys.
I don't think it's necessary, but.
Okay, yeah, do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to suspend the rules.
Got a motion uh by Mr. Grumney to suspend the rules, second by Mr. Neff, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Six yeas.
I'll make the motion on the emergency.
Second. I hope it's your language, right? You got it.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Six yeas.
All right, and I'll make a motion on the ordinance uh twenty twenty-four dot oh eight.
This second.
Second by Mr. Grumney, discussion, roll call.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Six yeas, motion approved.
All right, uh first reading ordinance twenty twenty-four dot zero nine and the ordinance amending specified sections of chapter one eighty-two. Of the Sunbury codified ordinances and declaring an emergency.
Well, why don't you come back up?
This is an uh a requirement through Ohio House Bill thirty-three, which was passed last summer. Requiring uh all municipalities to adopt cer- certain changes to their tax ordinance. Some, this was discussed in finance committee, but just as a high level, some of the changes include minors being exempt from all municipal income tax. Uh there's a late filing penalty cap at twenty-five dollars. Notices are prohibited when taxpayers are on extension. And it creates alternative apportionments for businesses with remote workers. Um this was to be in place um as of the beginning of the year. So uh an emergency would be required to get this in place um as soon as possible.
Would anybody like to be? Do you make a motion? We've got a motion by Mr. Martin to stay in compliance and suspend the rules with the state. Second by Mr. Neff, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Six yeas.
Motion on the emergence.
A motion by Mr. Martin on the emergency, second by Mr. Neff, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Six yeas.
And I'll make a motion on the ordinance.
So a motion by Mr. Martin on the ordinance and a second by Mr. Neff, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Six yeas, motion approved.
All right, we're on new and unfinished business. We have an insurance renewal twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five Ohio plan. We got Miss Stephen here.
Yeah, there's a memorandum in your council packet detailing the uh changes to the property and casualty insurance. The uh insurance overall increased by about four thousand one hundred and fifty-nine dollars. Um the cyber premium is billed separately and that did have a slight increase as well. It's about of about four to five hundred dollars there. So overall, not a large increase with um some extra properties that have increased in our plan. Auto liability increased um for new vehicles purchased. We added drone coverage to the policy. Um so a lot of things were added on and I think the rate change doesn't really reflect that as much, so it. To me, it's it's a decent rate change. It it is a little bit increased, but there are the details on what's what's behind that. And this would go into effect. March first twenty twenty-four through March first twenty twenty-five.
Even though it's went from fifty to fifty-four thousand, let's be honest, like compared to re- residential policies or individual policies like this, the value for what we get.
Yeah, I agree.
Um and it's required. Mr. Green, do you think we should pass this or Mr.?
It's good to be insured.
All right, um I'll make that motion to approve uh insurance renewal.
Second.
Second by Ms. Jair, discussion, roll call.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Six yeas.
I am gonna go to unscheduled visitors after this next one. I think I forgot to call that. I'm sorry. All right, we are on to bank signatory change, replace T. Ghost with J. Grumney. Sound like a restaurant.
This is uh something that the bank is requiring so that we can make this change. They require uh meeting minutes that document approval by council.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion to approve by Mr. Martin.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Cooper um discussions, roll call.
Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mr. Neff.
Yes.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Rair.
Yes.
Six yeas, motion approved.
All right, we're gonna go all the way back in the agenda. Are there any unscheduled visitors that would like to speak with city council this evening? All right, good deal. No harm, no foul. All right, we are on a new and unfinished business. This is Dray.
Um I don't think so. I did get to the Delaware County or Oh Woo, their. Enter their entrepreneurship building and met some great people, the president, the executive director. And uh a Philip Smith, he said he knows you. Um what they they put on programs for high school students and they work with Allentangie and they work with Berlin High School. And what they try and do is they talk to the students about entrepreneurship and how they could launch their ideas. Through Oh Woo and uh they would be willing to come here and put their program on or uh yeah.
Sign us up. That sounds great. Thank you for attending that. Uh by the way, I could not, well, it was in the middle of the day.
Yeah, I think it was.
That's right.
But it was first time I've been there.
That's great. Well, thank you.
Uh just two quick things. Actually, Daryl, it's hard to believe that uh we're in March already and May will be here soon, but I was just thinking about Memorial Day. Are we still set up with bleachers and the same setup as last year?
We are. Um yeah, we made the arrangements.
Okay.
At the conclusion of last Memorial Day celebration, so.
Good, good. Just I know it'll sneak up here and be here before we know it. So um the other thing is uh regarding the new uh fire department, the the uh. Issue that passed last night, I was a little nervous because I kept showing zero percent, zero percent. I saw school levies failing and I thought, oh no. I hope that's not the the wave, but uh I'm glad it passed and I think a lot of thank you goes to, of course, the the fire department itself. Um Councilman Neff for sitting on that. And I'd also like to um thank um uh Tim Ghost, former council member for his hard work, I think. Leading up to that. Um he he put a lot of hours in on that committee and and helping shape what it is uh and what got passed. So thank you to him and. Certainly the citizens of Sunbury because they really uh pulled through and I think going back to Dan's comment, the mayor's comment about future thinking. Um this is future thinking about the growth of Sunbury and having another fire department. Um I think is uh. Uh very mindful of the residents and I appreciate them showing up and supporting that, so.
I agree. Thank you. Well said.
Um on the line of few thinking about future growth, um we all know we we had submitted. Um some requests for state funding to Beth Leir and her office and for the. JR Smith Park and the widening of Route thirty-seven and that was not brought forward to the in the House's budget. However, we're still holding out hope. Um uh we are meeting with Andy Brenner tomorrow. And we are gonna discuss with him the widening of thirty-seven and JR Smith Park and we are hopeful that he will bring it forward um in the Senate's. Budget. So looking forward to that tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. And also um just to piggyback on that, you may have also heard that Sunbury was. Uh awarded four point five million dollars, uh four point two million dollars. Uh the federal, I'll say the federal process and it's been hung up for some time and we got official word last week. I mean, that's that's a massive head start on about an eight million dollar project. And it and it's comprehensive. It's all the things that we talk about as community leaders, you know, safety. Infrastructure improvements, which is not like a cool thing to say, but stormwater, any reducing flood risk. Um increasing walkability, connecting communities in the Ohio area trail. Um you know, pedestrian bridge is. Really the icing on the cake, but I actually listened to the school board meeting um from Monday. I I think uh Doug Crowe had mentioned that, you know, with so close to Bachman Street and it's got them thinking about. You know, that building doesn't have students in it right now, but in the future, you know, I'll. Enabling kids to walk through that area. Um you know, it's just not possible right now. Uh well, it's 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 possible. It's not as safe as we want. Um.
So hopefully the state can come through with.
That's right. Yeah, and we're we're really looking forward to uh meeting with Senator A- Andy Brenner tomorrow and. Sharing our vision and we believe he shares it as well.
That's all for tonight. Thank you.
Thank you for the update.
Yeah, I don't have anything.
All right, Mr. Neff.
Yes, um update for the Sunbury Big One and Area Chamber of Commerce. On April thirtieth is going to have a public forum at the high school from six to eight. Um for the housing crisis that's facing that we're all facing right now. So. All the public's invited to come. This is, we do have um some visitors that are going to be attending and and speaking. So then kind of a panel discussion afterwards uh with question and answers. So like to see everybody there.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. I also wanted to say thanks to Mr. Grumney. You're attending on behalf of Sunbury to the annual health district meeting. Is that a new record? We've hit the hour and a half mark. I've been here in a long time. Uh thank you for attending on my behalf. Believe it or not, I have a conflict right here, a meeting with the Girl Scout troop. I couldn't uh reschedule that and we're doing a simulated election tomorrow night, so I'm really looking forward to that.
Very good. That's cool.
Thank you.
Yeah, yeah, yep.
All right, team, anything else? Now everybody wants to get out of here. I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second by Mr. Grumney, discussion, next meeting, April third. Roll call.
Mayor St. John.
Yes.
Mr. Grumney.
Yes.
Mrs. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Neff?
Yes.
Ms. Dreher?
Yes.